Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Southborough School Committee Open Meeting, December fourteenth. President, Arquatura Martin, Jessica Devine, and Roger Chalan, and it is six thirty-one PM. We have a quorum. First item on the agenda is public comments. Seeing none, moving on to new business. I think this is going to be the third time Mr. Devine has been welcomed, but that's okay. It's deserved. I'd like to acknowledge that we have a new school committee member, Jessica Devine, who's going to be serving out the rest of Kim Trolander's term. And I think, as some folks know, she's not a stranger to the school committee. She was elected to the committee a few years ago, and I think we've all worked with her and are looking forward to working with her again. So, welcome again.
Thanks.
Principal report?
So, we have Principal Hershak here this evening to represent the Southborough Principals.
Thank you, Greg. I have the pleasure of giving the update for all four schools. So, I'll start with the Finn School. At the Finn School had its first person whole-school assembly supporting social-emotional learning with the theme of gratitude. Kathy Wilson and Jocelyn Bosser, Finn School's social-emotional learning leaders, highlighted the book "Giving Thanks: A Native American Good Morning Message" by Chief Jeff Swann, which not only supported the SEL theme of gratitude, but also highlighted Native American Heritage Month and Culture. Following the presentation, students were introduced to the Finn School gratitude tree, where students and staff wrote down what they're most thankful for on a paper leaf and then placed it on a tree as part of an interactive seasonal display. Finn has these photos of the gratitude tree on its website if you'd like to take a look. The second update from Finn School is through generous support from the Finn School's SOS, kindergarteners were able to experience the Discovery Museum's hands-on, interactive, traveling science workshop on force and motion. Students explored the concepts of force and motion while interacting with a variety of toys and had the opportunity to engineer their own toys that moved in lots of different ways. Students were able to experience how force makes objects move and how friction impacts movement. Additional presentations for pre-K and grade one are already scheduled, so very exciting. At the Woodward School, on December first, staff welcomed back storyteller Len Cabral to the Woodward School. He captivated the second-grade audience while making connections to the school enrichment themes. Len is an internationally acclaimed storyteller who has been enchanting audiences with storytelling performances at schools, libraries, museums, and festivals for decades. He has traveled the world sharing traditional African, Cape Verdean, and Caribbean folktales. Len's storytelling was the kickoff to the upcoming learning unit on folktales and fairy tales. In addition, last month at Woodward, third-grade students stepped back in time and attended a field trip formerly known as at Plymouth Plantation. This experience connected to their learning in social studies and helped them understand the importance of Native Peoples present and past in Massachusetts and the New England region. They learned about the time periods, elements of living, and the impact of the pilgrims, Puritans, and the expansion of the Massachusetts Bay Colony. This learning carried over to art, where students made Native American weavings, and technology, where students recorded their learnings using green-screen technology. Woodward would like to thank parents and families, especially Woodward SOS, for generously sponsoring both experiences. At the Neri School recently held its band orchestra and chorus concerts led by Lee Spignees and Lindsay Sherman. They were able to have in-school performances for the orchestra and band so that all Neri students could enjoy seeing their peers perform. The evening concerts were well-attended, and students were able to perform for parents and family members. Thank you, Trotier, for hosting. You're welcome. Neri had its annual fifth-grade C course. This is an event where all fifth-grade students practice running and competing for a spot on their classroom team. Then, classroom runners compete against each other on the running course. Each fifth-grade classroom student wore a specific-colored tie-dye shirt, and the entire school community went out to cheer on all runners. Parents also enjoyed to watch the competition. It was a wonderful way to come together as a school and start Thanksgiving break. Thank you to Mrs. Nash and the parent volunteers for helping out, making this wonderful event happen. At Trotier, I just want to recognize Jen Devlin, our Instructional Technology Support Specialist, who last year had written a grant that was awarded twenty Oculus or Oculus, I'm not sure of the plural, for the benefit of Trotier students to engage in virtual learning activities. To date, she has worked with multiple teachers to develop lessons. Students at current events were able to see war and torn Ukraine. Alicia Day and our Castle program at Peer Pals watched the Macy Day Thanksgiving Parade. Emily Casey, seventh-grade Social Studies, took her students on tours of India, China, Korea, and Vietnam. Mr. Winston and Mr. St. Pierre, sixth-grade Social Studies, had students visit Mesopotamia. And Jen Strong, sixth-grade Science, also had students explore the solar system. It's Jen's credit for not only writing the grant, but her ongoing collaboration with teachers to provide these meaningful experiences for our students. One announcement, we're going to be adding a new faculty member into Trotier in the new year. We're going to welcome Zoe, the Black Lab, who will be working at Trotier as a therapy dog. I'm happy to announce Amy Riley, a longtime science teacher who retired last year, has worked with Michelle Carv extensively in the bright organizations to secure her certification and to serve as a therapy dog. Zoe just stopped in to drop off paperwork the other day, and just her visit in the office really lit up office, staff members, and students alike. We'll start off small. She'll be working with our Castle students to do some literacy work and then be working with students in our comm classroom moving forward. So, it's great to welcome Amy Riley back and Zoe to Trotier.
Questions? Comments?
I just have a question. So, the Oculus, so the VR survey, it was like a video of being in these places?
Yes.
And then they were able to, and was it synced up so everybody was looking at the same thing at the same time?
It's pretty amazing. So, they're on a cart, they have hand motions, and they also have the goggles. And so, what we've had students do is actually sit in the chair, and we've done a couple different ways of it. Sometimes you have a driver, so you'll have a partner to tell you, like, all right, go left, go right, and then the person with the Oculus will be looking around, and they'll share what they're seeing. It's pretty impressive, the one we used for Ukraine. It was, imagine, it's like the bird's-eye view if you're on top of a building, looking down on war-torn Ukraine. So, at first, it showed these cities prior to the war, and then it showed the cities, you know, after the war. And so, the students next to them would ask specific questions. What do you see here? Are you at this location? Students would share, I'm at the factory, I see a burned-out tank, and then they would, you know, and then they would switch roles. So, yeah, it's been pretty impressive. Yeah.
Fascinating. And is Zoe going to be at the school every day?
No, I think, you know, we're going to start small. I think that's the advice that everyone has given me, because there's a logistical dynamic. So, I think the great thing is that Amy Riley has flexibility as a retiree. We were talking about, you know, starting with like one hour a week, you know, and then kind of building from there. And then hopefully, you know, from there, we can kind of start finding some other outlets. And I know we also have another staff member who just completed their certification as well, so we potentially could have two dogs here in the building moving forward. So, yeah, so I know there'll be some growing pains. We're leaning on a lot of other schools to kind of, you know, to adopt some of the best practices. So, but like I said, you know, Zoe's presence for ten minutes was like, I think this might work out. So, yeah.
That's great. Well, thank you for all the updates.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I've got to follow on to the Oculus question.
Yeah.
Now, are these, I know they make some of them self-contained, and then they make them where they're actually connected to either some kind of a screen or something like that that everyone can see. Are these, what are these?
These are self-contained. So, yeah, so I think, you know, the one, you know, I think YouTube, you know, has, you know, kind of a whole menu of options. And so, you know, as soon as the, you know, device goes on, students then kind of walk through a menu, find it, and then, so like, you know, for example, Roger, you could be about two or three minutes ahead of me on your journey, you know, than I would. We'd all start, we'd all start roughly at the same time, but sometimes with technical issues, you could, you know, your voyage could start before mine.
I'm never ahead of anyone.
Yeah. So, yeah, so, but yeah, it's, yeah, Jen's done a wonderful job. She's kind of demystified the process for teachers. You know, she's demonstrated, you know, to teachers, and then what you're hearing is, you know, teachers start sharing with their colleagues about the benefits of it. You have students who are talking about the experience, and so it just continues to grow and grow, you know. And I think, you know, and teachers aren't forcing it, they're trying to find the units and like the launching pads for where this would be, you know, optimal for the learning experience. And so, as you, you know, as I outlined, we just did, you know, about six so far in the last month, so we're hoping it can continue, and maybe we can bring it for the next school committee meeting.
That's interesting. Kudos to her for the grant, because we're going to see more and more of this without a doubt. So, it's good to sort of, not the ground floor, but it's good to get in and start to, you know, start to spend some time with it now.
And along with that, it would seem like it's right in line with, I know you said before when you polled the students about the type of learning that they want to do, that this is really...
I would imagine at the end of the year, this is something that students would identify as something they're going to remember.
Yeah.
So, and I think the other thing, it's very transferable to all disciplines, you know. I think I've highlighted social studies in particular, but you know, there's, you know, the avenues for science. I know, you know, last, we had a teacher have students tour, you know, Anne Frank's house, and so, and did a writing component around that. So, there's so many, you know, it can jumpstart so many meaningful conversations, it can jumpstart meaningful writing. It's so, the potential is, we just began to scratch the surface, so, yeah.
Great.
Sounds terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative update?
Yes, so just a brief update. At the November meeting, we did communicate that the Operational Services Division set a fourteen percent increase on special education and private school tuition costs. We have learned since that that price is set, that there's not going to be a change. We did send a letter to Senator Eldridge advocating on behalf of the school committee and community that that is unsustainable and does have an impact on our overall budget. Our shift for advocacy will now need to move towards circa-brecker in making sure that the governor's budget actually accounts for this fourteen percent increase in private school tuitions. So, that is the brief update.
Do you believe that it's likely that they will in fact?
You know, I think Becky's been on some calls. I think one of the benefits we have is, you know, the new governor. I think that could benefit us in terms of supporting education, but we'll have to wait and see.
It's all the conversation at the Masco meetings that I attend. You know, everyone's very concerned because it's having an impact statewide. So, I don't believe that with the advocacy, not just on our part, but across the state, that I'm hopeful that that may help districts.
I can understand why it's a conversation point, if you will, because it's significant.
So, Greg, so this is, can you just repeat this? This is a fourteen percent increase in private school tuition for special education outplacement?
Yes, so students that were not able to meet their needs within our district programming, who attend special education programs outside of our district.
Right.
Those price increases are set by the OSD, and they've set the increase to fourteen percent. And their rationale is inflationary impacts and also retaining staff. And our argument is we have the same inflationary impacts, and we also are having challenging times hiring new folks into positions that are open.
Right. They said due to retaining staff and what else?
Inflation.
Inflation, okay. Which is exactly what everybody else is. Okay. Thanks for explaining that. Okay.
MSBA?
Sure. So, just a quick update on the Neri Building Committee. So, the Neri Building Committee has not convened this year yet, primarily because there are three reports due to MSBA. I am pleased to share to the committee that we have submitted all three reports, the enrollment, capital, and educational plan. Those were submitted ahead of schedule, and the next key deliverable is a meeting with MSBA to go over the enrollment certification, where we're anticipating that will happen sometime in January. And our goal is to get in front of the MSBA board either in March or April. They set those dates. Just a reminder to the committee and the community, it's a two-hundred-and-seventy-day eligibility period that began in August. We are far ahead of where we need to be. We've already secured the feasibility funding from the town, so we were hoping that we would accelerate the process to move on to the feasibility phase of the process, but it looks like we're not going to be able to move quite as quickly as we had hoped. We had hoped that we'd be in front of the board this December. Jason Malinowski, the Chair of the Neri Building Committee, did communicate with committee members, and I think we're going to try to, he's going to try to convene the committee in January.
That's a nice update.
MSBA accelerated repair update. So, we did learn that MSBA has paused its accelerated repair program for this upcoming year. Due to the inflationary costs of projects that are underway, it has paused its accelerated repair program, which means that the submissions that we were hoping to send to MSBA, the Trotier roof, the Finn roof, are on hold for a year. And I think we'll have to wait to see what happens. I think their core building program is moving forward, but there is a pause on their accelerated repair program. And I did, we did communicate that to Mark Purple, and we'll have to wait and see how it plays forward in the next year.
Questions?
Can I just, oh, go ahead.
Please.
Oh, there's a pause, or the roofs, the roof wasn't old enough? Was it combined?
So, they're, both. So, so the statements of interest for the Trotier roof and Finn did not meet the eligibility criteria that MSBA sets, and that's a moving target, depending on how many submissions. So, we did not meet the criteria, and we were not invited into the eligibility period for those SOIs.
Right.
Our goal is to resubmit.
Yeah, yeah.
And we will not be resubmitting this upcoming year, because there's no program. We'll wait a year, get back in the queue.
So, the reality is, I guess, that even if we admitted the requirements, we still would have been out of luck because of the pause in the program.
Correct. We're also seeing more and more districts submitting statements of interest and trying to move projects forward through this program. So, it's becoming much more competitive, and they have limited funding, and the more submissions pushes out the criteria. So, the age of the roof, I think when we submitted the statement of interest for the Finn roof, Neri roof was twenty-five years.
Right.
It actually increased their criterion to twenty-seven years, or thirty years.
Thirty years, no. It was twenty-seven last year. Well, no, the year before and then, and now it's thirty. So, they keep moving the target up.
Okay. This came up more recently, the wearable smart device guidelines issue?
Yes, so the Principals have had several conversations around students wearing smartwatches and web-connected wearable devices, and it's become very challenging. I think Principals have experienced students texting home, calling home, recording, video recording, wearing these smart devices, and basically having some language in our handbooks. So, they drafted some language, and at the start of the new year, in January, they will be adding this language in the handbook and communicating out to families that this is a new expectation, and we'll be asking families for support on helping with these new guidelines. Gary, I'm not sure if you want to add any details in your experience as a Principal?
Yeah, I mean, I think in a meeting with my colleague, it seemed like this year, more than any at the elementary level, there's kind of an outburst of these devices, and it's been challenging. I think, you know, at the middle school, we've been contending with electronics, you know, just before this time. We're still dealing with cellphones. We don't see as many, the smartwatches are not, or the gizmos are not as much of an issue at the middle school. You know, so we have just kind of, I have shared our approach, you know, is that, you know, we're, our expectation is that these devices are away and off. You know, I love to tell you that we have a hundred percent compliance, but we don't. But I do think kids have, it's not disrupting the learning environment as we once saw. I think kids are trying their best to honor that, but, you know, I think for every precaution we put in there, there's a new technology that's kind of outpacing some of the parameters that we put in there. So, I think my elementary school colleagues are really kind of, they've seen kind of this being more disruptive than years past, and it's, I think, I think for elementary school students, they're not, they don't know how to navigate the technology. Or at the middle school, I think they've had the technology a little bit more, they've adhered to some of the expectations, so that will be, you know, part of their expectations moving forward in the new year.
Questions?
So, is this language going to be in Trotier's handbook too, or is this for just the younger grades?
Greg, we haven't talked about the...
No, I think Finn, Woodward, and Neri.
Okay.
And we, you know, I think Trotier is one of the things, I think, kind of the gradual release, and students being able to kind of manage these technologies, having it be more developmentally appropriate with middle schoolers. So, Gary and his, and our conversations around whether it's a real issue that needs to be addressed for a while.
I didn't look before the meeting, but I meant to, about whether, do we have a policy, a student cellphone policy or a student device policy or anything in our regular, in like the Southborough policies?
In Trotier, we do have a, you know, electronic policy, and I will say it's a little antiquated because I believe it references MP3 players, so it's, you know, so just...
This one does too.
Yeah, to give you a, so, and so, we do have a policy, and I think, you know, there's the policy, and I think there's the practice. And I think for Trotier, I think we did have to recalibrate the practice. I think, you know, coming out of the pandemic, you know, with our hybrid learning, you know, introduction to one-to-one devices, having kids here four days a week, I think, you know, as a staff, I think we probably had allowed a little bit more access to cellphones. This year, we did a calibration with our practices. The policy hasn't changed, it was really kind of embedding our practices a little bit more firmly and a little bit more consistently.
I have a question about, I'm going to try to separate policy, practice, handbook.
Sure.
So, when you say policy, that's a handbook policy, it's not a school committee policy?
Right, if we have a school committee policy that mentions...
Yes, we have a responsible use policy for faculty, staff, and students.
Yeah.
This is language that we're going to add to the handbook.
Right.
To the handbook.
To the handbooks.
Yeah.
And these are guidelines that will be followed through the handbook.
I was, yeah, okay. I was just wondering if we had a south, like a school committee policy that would need to be updated to reflect anything happening?
At some point, maybe, but that's not what this is about.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a, I wouldn't imagine there would be, especially because we're talking about pre-middle school handbook language. So, I imagine the concept of enforceability isn't even, isn't even an issue, right? For kids that age.
For elementary students, I agree. I don't think, you know, yeah, I don't think...
I wouldn't think so.
I don't think breaking out the policy for, you know, a third grader and having them read it back to the principal is really going to be the incentive. I think, you know, just, I think having the policy and sharing it with the community and sharing it with families and building that consistency from building to building, I think, is critical.
I'm worried about Finn.
Yeah. 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 Siri.
Uh-huh. Here's Gosha Mike on Key.
See? It was a disruption.
So, the next steps for Principals will be to send out communication to families next week, and then communicate when this language will be added to the handbooks. And again, we'll continue to work with families and students and within the months ahead.
I guess I'll take the old business, and I'm going to move on, since I don't think we have any at this point to discuss. So, we're moving to the Superintendent's Report. I'll turn the report over.
Sure. So, in your packet is the enrollment report as November fifteenth, 2022. Enrollments remain very steady as is typical, you know, this time of year. So, we had one less student than last month. So, our total enrollment is one thousand one hundred and seventy-nine, and we continue to look at projections for next year as we move through the budget process. And primarily, our focus is on making sure our class sizes are within class-size policy for fiscal year twenty-four at this point in time. The next item in the Superintendent's Report is the FY twenty-three monthly general fund expenditure report, and I'll turn it over to Becky.
Good evening, everyone. So, as of November thirtieth, we did have eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars, or three point seven seven percent remaining on the bottom line. One thing I do want to point out is that we do have more on the bottom line as it's shown on this report, and that's due to some encumbrances that were mistakenly removed. We have since rectified that. Those were in the accounts of substitute teachers, substitute nurses, and also athletic coaches. And so, the financial coordinator did find that, and she has since corrected that. So, with those encumbrances back on the bottom line, we really are trending very closely to where we were last year at this time, where we had just over five hundred and eighty-thousand, or two point six eight remaining on the bottom line. It was a very innocent thing, is that we have a, we have an encumbrance that's set up in our system, and she mistakenly deleted it, and because we are checking these reports on a weekly basis, we were able to catch that pretty quickly.
So, that sounds like about three hundred thousand dollars, you said?
It's about...
Eight, but it's really five, and that's pretty good. Questions on this? All right, I entertain a motion. Would you like us to approve this?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Southborough Public School District Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-three budget monthly general fund expenditure report as of November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two until audited. Is there such a motion?
So, moved?
Moved by Katara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jen. All in favor? Opposed? unanimous?
All right. Next, in your packet is approval of the FY twenty-three grants, and I will turn it back over to Becky.
So, also in your packet is an accounting of all the federal grants that Southborough Public Schools have received for fiscal year twenty-three. These are federal entitlement grants, and they are titles one, two, A, three, and four, as well as the IDEA special education and early childhood special education program grants. These six grants total four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars, and they are very beneficial to the work that we do here in the district. And I would ask at this time that the school committee vote to accept these grants.
Are there any questions about any of these grants? You can move on here.
So, I have a question.
Please.
Well, I just have a general question. So, have we voted on these, voted to accept them before, but we've been receiving them, or?
We started to vote on federal grants last year.
Yeah.
It is a practice that should have been done a long time.
Yeah, okay.
So, this is routed, I think.
Gotcha.
So, we just vote on these once a year, and you just vote to accept them? Okay.
So, just so I'm clear, so the question was, have we voted on federal grants before? And the answer is, we have, but not these.
Not these, correct. Last year, we voted on the FY twenty-two grants that we receive from the federal government.
S R one.
As one.
Isn't there an S R four, or is there not?
I wish.
I wish, yeah.
Okay. So, it's just one, two, and three? And last year, we voted on S R one?
Yes. Last year, I believe we voted on S R one, two, and three, because we received them all very close together.
I see.
Other questions, comments? And I'll take a crack at asking for a motion to approve the federal grants for Southborough listed in our packet totaling four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. Would that motion be sufficient? Do I hear, so moved?
So, moved.
Moved by Jessica. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Katara. Discussion? None? All in favor? Second by Katura. Discussion? None? All in favor? Approved unanimously?
Since Becky's on her roll, continue with the S R finding and revolving accounts report.
Don't think it's going to be so easy on the next one.
Well, I don't have much to report in terms of S R two and S R three expenditures over the past month as we have not had any further expenditures. However, the conversations do continue. Actually, Stephanie and I were just having conversations before the meeting about utilizing some of the, or finalizing the S R two grants here in Southborough. And just a reminder that we do have until the end of September of twenty twenty-three for S R two and then the following September twenty, of twenty twenty-four to utilize S R three funds. In terms of the revolving accounts, we did not receive any additional revenue in the facility rental revolving account. But you will see that there were additional expenses that did hit that account. And some of that is the work that was done actually here today at Trotter where that, those funds were set aside to perform the roof repairs to the Trotter roof. So that's exciting and I'm sure Gary and his staff are excited about that as well. In terms of the extended day facility, you can see we have received just over three hundred and forty-six thousand during fiscal year twenty-three in the extended day program. And in looking at our projections for where we thought we would be in terms of the salaries and the expenses for this program, we are trending close to what our projections were. So at this time, we do show a balance of one hundred and twenty-four thousand in that account. But again, just to point out that there is one position that we had projected that we have not filled as of yet. And we are looking at the needs of the program and will make a decision in January on what that new position will look like. So I welcome any questions.
I have one on S R two. Just maybe just so, at least the way it's presented in the packet, the the stipends and contractual services, they're done, right?
Yes, yeah.
And is that why they're organized this way? So because then we have the supplies, I guess. I guess it's really the suppliers, right? And that's, that's where we still have a balance.
Exactly, exactly. So we have about fifty-seven hundred in the staff and student devices and then just under eleven thousand in classroom materials. And we are looking at some new social studies curriculum materials that we could utilize those funds on.
I don't know any questions on S R three at this point. Anyone? Sounds like you can move on.
So now we have the capital planning. And so the capital planning subcommittee did meet on December eighth to finalize the capital plan. I think it was a very productive meeting. A lot of conversations around some of those outward year projects and making sure that we had cost estimates for those projects. And I will turn it over to Keith Avoye who will provide a brief update.
Yes, thank you. And I agree, the meeting was quite productive. I think we talked about a, a number of different angles that the, the capital plan can be looked from. We want to be as transparent and as clear as possible. So I think the plan that has been updated in your packet does do that, although it didn't print perfectly. But if you do look at it from a full page perspective, one of the biggest changes is that we did a reordering. So we put Finn, Woodward and Trotter together and then separated the things for Neri to really delineate that that is fully what we're trying to accomplish to the MSBA process. And I've identified more of those projects than we had in the past to make sure that we do have a longitudinal plan for what we're expecting with, with the different schools. So I think it was a great idea to add some of those cost estimates. I worked closely with Brian Fantoni. We contacted a few of the vendors that we've used in the past, trying to get an idea of the scope and scale of what we'd be doing. So those cost estimates have been included to kind of round out the plan and, and get those estimates included. So you, you won't see any more TBDs. We filled those in as much as we could. And then the second change was obviously the organization of the document to have, you know, Neri put at the bottom. I'll also add that we did allow Jason Alanowski, who is the chair of the capital plan, to take a peek. And he gave it a thumbs up for its organization and, and its thoroughness and also being clear about what's expected in FY twenty-four especially was, was a key part of his original thoughts. So I think we, we aimed at a lot here and unless there are any, any questions, I, I believe we're in good shape. Sure.
I actually have a, have a question and I was at the subcommittee meeting. So I, I, one of the things that I think we touched on during that meeting, and I think you were going to sort of check in with Jason about it when you spoke with him was whether there was anything that would make sense to move to FY twenty-four because we have nothing in the FY twenty-four column other than the Neri feasibility and all that, which is kind of separate right now. But um, so was that, was that, am I right about that? That was, he was going to comment on that? Or are we thinking about whether we want to move anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we did have that conversation. After some initial conversation with Keith and me, we decided not to move anything over. I do, the town of Southborough, the capital planning committee doesn't have anything slated for us during that year.
Okay. And there's nothing so urgent that we need to move it over? So I mean, we wouldn't want to expedite anything if we didn't have to, but
The priority was really the Trotter roof. There have been some acceleration of leaks over the past six months. However, we feel like some of the work that Becky mentioned that happened today in terms of replacing a section of the roof will actually provide us with some space to actually think about what a longer term solution is for the Trotter roof.
And we'll be testing it out on Friday with a rainstorm that's coming in. So this is exciting, isn't it, Gary?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, my pleasure.
And we do need a vote on this.
Okay, so I would then entertain a motion to approve the Southborough Public Schools fiscal year two thousand twenty-four to fiscal year two thousand twenty-nine. We're going to take it the whole five years. Facilities capital plan as, as presented in your packets. Is there a so moved?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is that wording sufficient?
Yes.
Questions? Discussion? All in favor? Both carries unanimously? I didn't, I didn't think putting an amount in there made sense because it spans a lot of different years and schools and
So also in your packet is, are the FY twenty-four budget priorities. So those were voted at the October meeting. And included is the budget calendar. And I just want to highlight a date in January and that is January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. The select board and town administrators hoping to have a joint meeting with the boards and committees. And that is on a Saturday. So as I get more information, I will communicate that to the committee.
The date again was the twenty?
January twenty-eighth. I just want to, I need one second to get organized.
Question about the budget priorities. I assume you voted these in our favor? As, as printed here or there were?
There was a
There was a
There was a print and then the revision.
There was a revision.
The two subbulids were the revision and we also reviewed those previously.
Got it, okay.
So the addition
Right, thank you. Sorry.
I also question that in my mind. It seemed like there were some conversations in November, but I did check, double check.
I think we, we did it with the understanding that the revisions were going to be included and that's how that, that's how that moves forward.
So this evening I'm excited to present the FY twenty-four preliminary budget. In terms of the budget work, I just want to make a note that it is early in the budget process. There are a lot of unknowns in terms of financial projections. So the budget that we're presenting this evening is with the best known information that we have at this point in time. In the next several months, we'll have better numbers and better data and get to a more closely aligned budget that aligns with the fiscal realities of the town and also the state. So in terms of the budget process, so I think it's important to talk about the fact that we are a mission and vision driven organization. Our mission is quite simple. It's to educate, inspire and challenge all students. I emphasize all. And our vision is to make sure that we are helping students develop to become collaborators, critical creative thinkers, communicators, socially and civically engaged, growth oriented and healthy and balanced. Each year, the budget process begins, feels like it begins in July. But I think the, the next fiscal year budget really starts in September. And the important work we do as a school committee is really thinking about as a school committee, what are the budget priorities for the upcoming fiscal year? And that's a really important process because that helps us make decisions around what to move forward with and what to, what to table for upcoming years. I think that another important part of the process really begins in October. Becky and the finance department works very closely with principals and directors as they prepare their building base and director budgets. Those were submitted to, on the finance department on October thirty-first. And then in November, Becky spent, and her team spent time creating a preliminary budget. So what you see this evening are the budgets that each principal submitted as well as directors aggregated into a single budget. In terms of upcoming meetings and upcoming, upcoming budget process, so in January, February, we'll move from preliminary to recommended. We also will meet with the town boards and committees to hopefully seek approval from the town boards and committees. And then lastly, in March, we'll go to public hearing and then present the budget at the Southborough Town Meeting, which is scheduled for Saturday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. When we look at the FY twenty-four budget, at this point in time, there are some budget variables. There are some unknowns. And we are finishing year three of a three-year contract with the Southborough Teachers Association. We are in negotiations currently. Negotiate a new contract. And part of that contract is really looking at what the financial impact will be to the upcoming fiscal year budget. So at this point in time, what we don't know is, is the cost of living adjustments. So that is an unknown. Also earlier this evening, we spoke about the out of district special education tuition increases of fourteen percent. That does have a significant impact on the overall budget. We are also seeing increased costs in special education transportation, increased energy costs. And so we are anticipating a significant increase in energy costs in the upcoming fiscal year. And then the last two items are just impacts of inflation. So we are seeing supplies and materials having a significant impact in terms of inflationary increases and costs of services are increasing as well. So businesses that are seeing the inflationary impacts are, are shifting those costs on to their consumers. So that is something that we are watching very closely and hopefully in the months ahead, we will see the inflationary impact decrease. As we move through the budget process, so we talk about two types of budgets, a level funded budget and a level services budget. So a level funded budget is using the same amount of funding allocated from one fiscal year to the next fiscal year. So a level funded budget for FY twenty-four would be using FY twenty-three appropriated amount. And as you can imagine, to get to a level funded budget, we would need to reduce services. We would need to reduce employees. We would not be able to add new positions, programs. This has not been the case in Southborough. I think, I don't think ever in my understanding of the history of the budget process. But I think it's important just to talk about the two types of budgets. The other type of budget is a level services budget. Really, how much money would we need to provide the same level of services that we provided in the previous fiscal year? And the funding of the budget would, would increase in order to cover salary and cost increases. No new positions, programs or services would be included. Typically, what we, what happens with the fiscal year budget is we have a level services budget with incremental growth areas in certain mind ends. We might add a position, we might add a few programs, but primarily it is a level services budget for the most part.
You have a question on the way through?
Sure, yes.
Just, just to talk about the term level services. In a situation where you have an influx of, of students and to maintain any kind of a class size, except for a class size ratio, you wouldn't be able to do it with the number of teachers that you've had a year before. To simply cover that difference, would that still be called a level services budget? Because you're providing the same level of services, but you really wouldn't need new positions or I just want to
Correct. So I'll use fiscal year twenty-three as an example since we added two classroom teachers due to increased enrollment. Two of our elementary schools. That was in addition to the budget that was appropriated by the town. There, we did not have that money appropriated. Where we were able to add those positions with cost savings of hiring that took place. So it was more circumstantial that we were able to fund those positions without going back to the town to ask for increased funding to our appropriate budget.
That might not necessarily have been possible.
Correct.
And would we still call that the level service?
That would, no, that is not a, that is not a level services budget. That is, we added new positions.
Okay, I understand it's not a level funded budget.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Greg, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
For going like as we're listening to this, do we, can you remind me, do we have a projected enrollment for kindergarten for twenty-four yet?
We, we have two enrollment projections. One is Nezdeck and a second is RLS.
Yeah.
We're using those projections in our, our financial modeling.
Yeah.
However, the kindergarten process and enrollment begins in January.
January, okay.
And we will gain a better understanding what our enrollment will look like.
I wasn't sure if I was missing it, like because I was looking for it and I said, is it there yet? But okay.
I can send those to you. But, but you, have you seen either of those? You wouldn't necessarily have seen them.
I, well, I saw the enrollments, you know, in the packet, but then I was looking for, to see if there were the projections for
For the, for the Nezdeck, that other company?
Yeah, yeah.
I can, I can send you both of those. I'll send them to you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that'd be, yeah, because that kind of affects
It does.
Next year too, like if we're going to have a huge kindergarten class again. Okay.
And I'll just comment in terms of, you know, the increase in enrollment this, in FY twenty-three where we had to add two sections. I think the real estate market is a factor that we are seeing. The real estate market, people are moving out and those houses are quickly being purchased. And we're finding that young families are moving in as a result, which is impacting our enrollment. In terms of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four approved budget priorities. So I think one of the driving documents that we use to make decisions around moving programs forward is our strategic plan. Vision twenty twenty-six, educate, inspire and challenge. As you know, there are five strategic objectives. Those strategic objectives are woven into our school improvement plans and really guide our work as a district. In terms of the school committee's additions from prior years in terms of budget priorities, this year, there are two bulleted items that are important to note. The first is to expand fine and performing art experiences for grade, students in grades kindergarten through eight. And secondly, seek to add world language programming in grades K through grade three. So we are beginning those conversations to see what type of resources we would need to add language programming at the grade K through three level. So again, another bullet that I will point out is recruiting, maintaining, and supporting high-quality staff. So we are a people organization, people are the most important part of the work we do. And I think in this climate of retaining our excellent teachers, this is a really important goal in terms of the fiscal year twenty-four budget, not only to maintain and retain the great people we have, but also to recruit positions for, you know, open positions that we have moving forward. So the budget process, so where are we in the budget process? So we always begin with the fiscal, the prior fiscal year's budget. So FY twenty-three, the appropriated budget was twenty-two million, two hundred eighty-four, four hundred forty-three thousand. That is the baseline. So all of the principals' initial requests, including new materials, new resources, that were provided to the finance team on October thirty-first, totaled twenty-five million, four hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars, which represented a fourteen point two eight percent increase over fiscal year twenty-three. Again, this is not atypical, so this, usually the, all of the requests result in a significant increase. The next part of the process is applying circuit breaker. So we applied Chapter Seventy, Circuit Breaker, which totals one million, two hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars. And that brought our preliminary budget to twenty-four million, two hundred twenty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars, or an eight point seven three percent increase. So this is the point where we're starting from, an eight point seven three percent increase. And we'll talk about some of the factors and what's included in this particular budget. In terms of the comparison, so I think where we, where were we at this time of last year? So all of the initial budget requests, at the same time last year, came in at nine point eight five percent. And after applying circuit breaker at this point in time with a preliminary budget, we were at four point seven five percent. So we're about four percent above last year's percentage compared to this time of, of last year. So the next slide really speaks to what is the impact of a one percent increase, a two percent increase. So one percent increase of the fiscal year twenty-three budget is a little over two hundred twenty thousand dollars. So you can see, you know, two percent increase, obviously it's double that. To get to a five percent increase with the preliminary budget, we would have to currently reduce that budget by eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, three dollars to get to a five percent increased budget over fiscal year twenty-three. Questions?
Do you have a sense, you know, when we talk about the preliminary budget percentage increase this year compared to where it was last year, from four percent to eight percent? Do you have a sense, general sense, on where, what's, what areas are significant in driving the difference? I mean, I don't, that's...
Electric, we do, we have electricity, special education transportation, out-of-district education costs.
Have you factored that, so that fourteen percent that hasn't, hasn't, haven't given on that's in there?
Correct, so the eight point seven three percent is primarily due, and we'll break it down for you, primarily due to energy costs, inflationary costs, special education transportation, and out-of-district special education tuitions.
I'm sure we'll hear this when we get, you know, together with, in the, in the budget meeting at monthly, or not monthly, but by, yeah, early morning budget discussion. But the, the electrical, the electricity contract that was negotiated, that's going to expire when?
November.
Next November.
So we have, we have a year for that, one year before.
So just, in comparison, Northboro's contract expired this past November. And the impact to the Northbrows of electricity costs was about eighty thousand dollars from November to end of this June, so, which is a sixty percent, sixty percent increase in electricity costs.
It had to be significant, right?
Greg, you talked a little bit earlier about, actually, are you on it yet, the budget drivers? Yes. Out-of-district and collaborative tuitions, about a fourteen percent increase. As you're walking through it, could you say what the others are?
Sure, so, so when we look at the budget drivers, so salary increases and COLAS. So of the eight point seven nine percent, one million, one hundred seventy-six thousand, two hundred forty dollars is salary increases, I believe it's a little, it's about five point seven percent of the eight point seven nine percent increase. The out-of-district collaborative tuition, so that includes the fourteen percent tuition increase for out-of-district programs. Also, a couple of out-of-district placements that we're projecting that will take place next year. So those are included, so students who need programming to meet their needs outside of our district. That represents about a two point seven four percent increase in the overall budget. Transportation, special education, we're seeing increased costs of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred eight dollars. And then classroom instructional technology hardware, so that's thirty-four thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars. So it's a little, it's about nine tenths of a percent. So when you look at all of those, those increases, it adds up to about eight point nine percent increase.
Can I ask or clarify, so those first three in particular salary increases, out-of-district, those are things that cannot be reduced, right? So in order to come down below that eight percent, the money would have to be cut elsewhere in the budget, correct?
I think that, I think it's, and again, part of the message this evening is, as it's early on in the budget process and we have to let the processes play forward, so we have better data. The out-of-district collaborative tuition, so as team meetings take place and as we move into January and February, we'll have a better understanding of what placements will happen. That has the potential to positively impact the overall budget. So budget off, sure.
Roger, can I just, can I ask you a question?
I'm sorry, please.
So do we know what the COLAs are going to be next year?
We don't.
Okay, so, but what if, this is, this assumed...
This, this has some assumptions built in.
Yeah, okay, so just a general random number, okay. And then, I'm sorry, just one more thing, so the out-of-district and collaborative tuition, the six oh nine, does that include, that includes the fourteen percent increase plus additional, a couple of additional out-of-district placements? And does not take into account circuit breaker money?
So we applied circuit breaker?
You did already apply the circuit breaker, so this is above and beyond, if they're not funding the fourteen percent?
Correct, so this does not, this does not take into account that we will receive increased circuit breaker as a result of the fourteen percent tuition. So that is a great example of information that we'll gain as we move through the budget process.
Right, okay, okay, thank you. And when, I'm sorry, when do we find out about circuit breaker?
Circuit breaker, we won't know until next summer.
Yes, it's, okay, I seem to remember, it's really late in the process.
But if they were to do something additional, we would know during the budget process. But this year with the new governor, we won't have a first budget until March. So we'll really be done by the time we have numbers from the state.
But it's unlikely that they'll go up, I mean, right, given historically what they've done.
Correct, and I think that with the Student Opportunity Act, special education transportation is now eligible for circuit breaker reimbursement. So we were hoping to see increased amount in reimbursement from that, and we haven't seen, we have seen some. But it is not enough to really impact our overall cost of transporting our kids. I don't anticipate seeing the fourteen percent folded into the circuit breaker that we receive.
Okay.
For example, this year, we received just about seventy-four thousand dollars in special education transportation circuit breaker. This upcoming year will be year three of a four-year plan to phase that in. So we should see, you know, incrementally more. It still remains to be seen though what it will look like.
Okay, thank you.
One last question, you were saying what percentage each of these were? And I missed what you said about the special ed transportation.
So that's about two, two percent?
Two percent, okay.
Let me, um...
And it added all up to nine point something?
Correct.
Two point seven on the transportation and the special ed?
Yeah, and it's about eight, eight point nine percent total, about nine percent.
Eight point nine percent of the fourteen point two eight?
Of, of the eight point seven three.
It's the reverse, so for, of the eight point seven three increase, fourteen percent is due to the out-of-district. Two percent of it is due to transportation.
So, so what we did was we started with a fourteen percent budget, we applied circuit breaker.
Yeah.
That got us to the eight point seven three percent. So the budget drivers in the budget, COLA, which is five point seven, five point seven six, about two point seven four for collaborative tuitions, and then nine tenths of a percent for the remaining, the bottom two rows, transportation and classroom instructional technology hardware, where you haven't, we haven't yet, the next slide is offsets, so that's where it starts to pounce out. So you're seeing half the picture.
Gotcha.
So here are the offsets, so circuit breaker, special education reimbursement offset, which we talked about. Circuit breaker, special education, transportation reimbursement offset. And then retirements and leaves of absences, which is about a hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars. This is less than we typically see, but is variable from year to year depending on who's retiring and who's leaving. So that total for budget offsets is one million, four hundred five thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars. So the preliminary budget this evening, the total is twenty-four million, two hundred twenty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars, which represents an eight point seven three percent increase over fiscal year twenty-three. So now we're going to talk about what's included in this budget. So we talked about level services with some incremental growth areas. And we also want to talk about positions that principals requested that are not added to this budget, but were requested by principals. So we'll start with positions that were requested by principals but are not included in this preliminary budget. So there were a total of eight point three six FTEs with a total cost of six hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred thousand, six hundred eleven thousand dollars approximately. And that's about a three percent increase on the preliminary budget that we saw. So it moved from about eight point seven to about eleven percent. So the positions that were requested were two world language educators, a reading tutor, a human resource generalist, so we support about eight hundred employees across our three districts. So this would be cost share with the region and Northboro, Southboro's portion would be point three. Adding a point five nurse, adding a health educator, an additional ELD educator, a point five FTE speech and language pathologist, special education teacher, social worker, school adjustment counselor, and then a point two FTE assistant physical education teacher. So those positions were requested by principals, but again, not included in the preliminary budget that's before you this evening.
Those really aren't in the packet, are they? It's just, just what's in the budget is in the packet.
In terms of supplies and materials that are, that are included in the budget, so we do have funds for middle school science curriculum, ten thousand dollars. There is money for mathematics, the elementary level, it's envisioned math K through five, twenty-three thousand, three hundred twenty-eight dollars. Middle school math curriculum, a little over twenty-one thousand. And then student and staff devices, seventy thousand dollars. One of the areas we're seeing where we need to make sure that we are maintaining current devices is with technology. For example, the MCAS platform requires certain operating system for the MCAS to work. So we are bumping up against that, so we need to make sure we stay current so we can meet the needs of the programming and MCAS administrations moving forward.
Can I ask a question about the devices?
Sure.
Is that amount to replace, to buy new devices to replace ones that are no longer functional?
It's replacing, it's a part of a replacement cycle.
They don't all get, oh, it's just part, okay, cycle, thank you.
Yeah. So we would waterfall devices that have aged out, no longer support the programs that we run in our classrooms and classes.
And is this the first time we're doing that, is that why it's an increase? Or is this, because I would assume once it gets added as a line item, it would just be built in as sort of a regular routine?
Yeah, one of the, the work that Julie Doyle and Ann O'Leary have done over the past several months is coming up with a device replacement cycle, so replacing one-fifth of devices every year. So this represents that replacement cycle moving forward. So this would become a annual budget expense to support the device, the one-to-one device program that we have. So what is not included in this budget, but again, was requested. So we have K through five ELA curriculum and professional development of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Elementary math program, twenty-two thousand dollars. Math screening diagnostic and ELD kindergarten curriculum. I'm not so much concerned about DST math, the math screener, and the ELD kindergarten curriculum, because I think working with Dr. Ryan Horn, we can find grant money to fund that. I do, I am concerned, and we are concerned about funding the ELA K through five curriculum, professional development, and resources and materials. I'm sure in the news, you've heard a lot about the science of reading and Megan Kelty's, we've been working closely with our elementary educators. We've made some improvements in terms of our ELA curriculum in grades K one and two. This curriculum reflects the next level of work that we need to do throughout our system. But these are not included in the preliminary budget that is before you this evening.
So if we don't, but if we don't implement that or spend funds on that, does that mean we're going to be behind other districts or where we need to be?
Yeah, so I think that we are, I think we've been one step ahead of, we've been keeping up with the requirements, the dyslexia screening, some of the research and the science around reading. I think one of the areas that Stephanie and Megan are working on is how do we phase this in? So if we can't do the entire K through five, what is a phased-in approach? The state has approved curriculums, so we're looking at what are the cost factors? Are there more affordable options that are evidence-based and research-based and that work is happening behind the scenes?
I'm just curious, so how long has this been on our radar as far as something that we've been wanting to upgrade to? Is it, is this sort of becoming an old need or is it, is this new?
No, but I think the, the science of reading is, is not new. But I think the state push around evidence-based reading programs is relatively a year or two old. And I think the Department of Elementary Education has vetted curricula and is pushing districts to make sure that they are evidence-based programs. This would help us align with that. This has been a, I think, a three-year journey, and again, we are, we have made progress, this is the next level of work we need to do.
Are we not using evidence-based reading programs?
So the, it's actually a pretty complicated story in elementary literacy, and there's actually a Greg reference that there's a lot in social media and for educators and for parents of kind of the trends. And I, you know, you hear about the reading wars and you, you hear the same thing in math, right? Where like the trends and the pendulum swings. Well, the research is not new, but the attention to it in recent years and in really trying to recalibrate and say, where has maybe the marketplace steered us in the wrong direction in some cases? And it doesn't mean that we didn't have a lot of things going that were evidence-based, but we haven't, we've had areas where we need to grow. And during the pandemic, the Department of Education was already on a journey, particularly in the area of literacy, but in general around high-quality instructional materials. The research is very clear that it makes a difference in student learning, depending on what materials teachers and students are using. And one piece of that was around literacy, and they came out with what they've called mass literacy. And they've, they had a committee that was working for multiple years. It came out during the pandemic, and so it was a pretty soft kind of rollout. And so we sort of followed in a very incremental way. And I agree with Greg, like, we were keeping up. You know, we were getting our literacy screeners going, we were updating our phonics work, we added in phonemic awareness, which was a piece where we had sort of a gap that we didn't have some good resources, so we added that in. And then we were working on professional development with teachers. And the teachers are in a great place right now where they've added these pieces. They're seeing the need for some updated resources and are excited about that. And we have a committee that's working on reviewing a couple of options that are highly rated by national rating and by Desi's own rating processes and are, in the relative scheme of things, affordable. There are some very unaffordable options that we have already taken off of the, off of the plate. So do we have everything we want in front of us right now? No, but do we have things that are moving us and are keeping us, keeping us moving in the right direction? Yes, and that's a great word.
And then that budget amount reflects the amount that the committee has said this would be a reasonable amount to spend potentially?
This reflects quotes that we've gotten from, from one of the two companies, and we believe it's the higher of the two quotes. So it gives us a pretty good ballpark amount. And with a literacy program, typically the first year is going to have kind of an upfront cost to it because there's often sort of sets of books and sets of materials that are non-consumable but are part of an upfront cost. So we're still working through more specifics of like, what's the ongoing cost in future years? And, you know, what are, are there any, what more can we learn about that number? But it seems like a pretty good number to work with at this point.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Sure.
And I'll just make one comment, and that is, you know, do we have evidence for these materials? We do. We also have very skilled educators. And the research is clear that if you have very skilled educators with the right resources, that's when you get the best results. So I think we have great educators and we're trying to get in their hands the best resources to help literacy move forward. Our students perform very well in, in literacy and reading. I think, so I think we are doing a lot right, and it's just a matter of fine-tuning and improving and growing our programs.
Thank you.
So to be clear, this hundred and forty-four thousand dollars isn't not in the budget?
Correct, not at this time.
Not at this time. But it seems pretty important. Well, I, so I'm not sure what I mean by the phrase pretty important. All right, so let me, let me make a different comment. Why isn't it in the budget?
So this is.
Because it isn't important or?
No, I mean, I think this is, this is a preliminary budget. This, this represents our best thinking as we get better data and the financial picture becomes more clear. This is something we might weave into the budget. We have many more conversations around what this is going to look like, what are our options moving forward? What is a phased-in approach? And those conversations are underway, but we are not in a place right now where we're ready to make that determination and add it to the budget at this point in time.
So we know, we know that this is going to be a challenging budget year for the town, for the schools. Been doing budgets for a long time, I haven't seen too many increase from this point forward. Because there's a lot of pressure to decrease, to cut. So I'm just curious about the strategy, if, if this is something that, that is needed. Now, hey, it may not make it, it may not make the final cut anyway, but it's not even in it for the cut at this point.
Yeah, and again, I would just, I'd say this is the ceiling amount of the, one of them. There were three basically pathways. One was over a million dollars approximately, or three-quarters of a million dollars.
For the program?
I understand why that's not in there.
There were, there were two that were around there.
Yeah, so this is, this was an option. And again, a, a research team is looking at this and deciding on what's the best pathway. There's another less expensive option that is being vetted. And that, that working group will make a recommendation, and again, through Megan Kelty's leadership, potentially talk about a phased implementation, which again, could reduce the cost for next year.
And there's a lot of different ways to look at that with literacy. One is sometimes phased implementation is thinking about, are you doing all of K to five at the same time? Or are you doing certain grade levels? But another way of thinking about phased implementation in literacy is that literacy curricula have many components to them. They include the phonics, the phonology, sorry, the phonology, the phonemic awareness, handwriting, writing, reading. Like there, there's just many components. And so depending on the programs, there may be possibilities of thinking about, like, is there phasing of the components? And we just haven't gotten far enough yet to really sort of say, are any of those good options?
Well, I mean, to be clear, I'm absolutely not advocating for a larger budget number because it's not, it's, it's not going, it's going to get small.
Yeah.
But I was just trying to understand a little bit of the, maybe the strategic thinking about it, I guess, and as far as this particular item. So I, I think I probably, you know, I'm going to.
I think this, this, or these items not included in the budget. We can also have the same conversation around the positions that are not included in the budget.
Yeah.
And as we, as we move through the budget process, and again, it becomes more clear, we then potentially can have conversations around, you know, yes, we can contemplate adding a position or adding a curriculum because we have better numbers, and those better numbers are, were favorable to a percentage that we want to come in as, as a budget.
Are those, are the positions in these requests in priority order of what we think of as, no?
Not yet. And I think that the principals, directors, we have meetings scheduled, we actually have a meeting next week. And that's the type of work we're going to move forward with. We're going to have more conversations around the positions, the programming that we'd like to accomplish, making sure it's aligned with our budget priorities and strategic plan. So just to look historical budget increases and percent increases. So from FY eighteen through FY twenty-three, you can see that we've had modest budget increases. If you look at the average of the past six years, our budget increase averages to about two point three three percent over those six years, which I think is, and we've been able to improve and grow programs. So we've been extremely fiscally responsible. If you see the FY twenty-four preliminary budget compare, in comparison, right now we are, and again, we're not comparing prior preliminary budget, so this is a little bit skewed. But right now we are at eight point seven three percent, so almost four times last year's appropriated budget.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, you're doing apples and oranges because.
But it shows where we are.
At this point, last year was really double, not four times.
So with what we know tonight.
All right.
And then one of, you know, we've been talking a lot about what are, you know, what is the difference between last year at this time when we were presenting a four point seven five preliminary budget? And this time this year where it's a four point eight or eight point seven percent budget? Then one of the major factors is the cost of inflation. So the impact that it has on goods, goods and services, energy costs. And if you look at historical, look back on inflation, our budget increases, about two point three three percent, have basically been just slightly above inflationary costs. If you look at the preliminary budget presented this evening, it's parallel to the rate of inflation currently. So it's just another way to look at where we are in comparison. I don't think that the preliminary budget is a fiscally irresponsible budget. I think it is a fiscally responsible and educationally sound budget. And that we, we too, like every other town department and community, are feeling the impacts of, of the economic climate currently. So where do we go from here? So we have, it's early on in the budget process, we have a tremendous amount of work to do as a leadership team. And really thinking about, you know, what are we trying to accomplish through the budget process? What goals are we trying to achieve? I think our goal really is to get better data. So we'll continue negotiating with our teachers association, continue advocating at, at this, the state level for increased circuit breaker money. We'll have a better sense of what programs we're going to add, a better sense of special education costs, whether students who we anticipate might need additional or a different placement, we might learn that they might not. So we remain optimistic in that it is early on in the process. And, you know, in the weeks and months ahead, we'll have a, I think, a more clear picture. And if I were to predict, I would say, a much more favorable budget increase, a much more realistic budget increase.
Let me ask this, if, so I know we're dealing with larger numbers. Is the budget process you've moved through so far harder, more complex? Or is it really just different, if you will, because of this size of the inflationary issues? Or does it bring different kinds of challenges because of those issues?
I think the, the budget process to where we are today is parallel to prior years. The budget process moving forward is going, going to be more difficult. When you are starting from a four point seven five percent increase as a preliminary, it's much easier to have conversations than when you're starting at eight percent. So we anticipate, and we anticipated this budget year to be challenging for all the reasons we discussed. But again, I'm optimistic that we'll be able to make forward momentum and progress and bring forward a level services budget with some growth areas when, when the process is completed.
You good? Thank you.
And that concludes the superintendent's report to the committee.
So the next item is pretty exciting. The Washington DC trip. Who's, who's up on that?
So Mr. Hershak and former principal, Lippaway.
So Roger, thank you. It is exciting to sit before you and talk about the Washington DC trip. And I want to thank Keith for joining me tonight. As you know, that Keith has been principal for Trottier for a long time, was an architect of, of this experience for Trottier. And so if there are questions that the committee has, I may defer some logistical questions to Keith because he lived there for, for so many years.
This is why he moved over, right?
Exactly.
We have a name tag thing in there.
More support, so, so it is with great pleasure that we do ask for consideration to reinstate the Washington DC trip starting next year. As you know, that this trip, or maybe some of you don't know, that this trip dates back into nineteen seventy-four, nineteen seventy-five. It has tremendous curriculum connections, but it really is kind of a watershed moment for our middle school students. And due to the pandemic, you know, this really hasn't been, you know, a consideration, you know, for the last three years. And so we feel like at this point, it is time to reconsider this, this trip for the benefit of our, of our students. And we're asking for the committee to consider reinstating this trip for the dates of next year, which would be Wednesday, November eighth, to Saturday, November eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Just a reminder that in that stretch is Veterans Day, which falls on the Friday, which is November tenth. So this trip logistically, we would leave, we would call students out of classes on Wednesday, assemble them in, in the auditorium for departure on Wednesday with return on Saturday. So essentially, we'd only be missing one day at school, and that would be that Thursday. You know, we have adjusted the trip over, you know, prior to the pandemic. It used to fall on Columbus Day weekend. We made the adjustment to Veterans Day, Keith, when was that adjustment made?
Two thousand thirteen, fourteen?
Some other adjustments we made is just the timing of the trip. We used to leave, you know, three o'clock in the morning and then kind of begin the process once wheels landed. We found that, you know, students just were so tired and fatigued that they didn't, it wasn't as enriching. So we've kind of, we've gotten into, into DC in the evening, get them prepared in the hotel in order to kind of embark on, you know, two or three days of touring the city. So I think with those adjustments have been, have been critical. You know, we're working with tour companies that have already begun the tour process within the pandemic. They have already made some adjustments to their practices, so we are not the first, you know, school to do this. The tour companies have kind of adjusted their practices accordingly, whether, you know, in terms of meals, in terms of rooming, in terms of travel, you know, by coach buses. So that is our request, and we outlined, you know, the logistics and the detail in the packet. So we would open it up to the committee at this time for any particular questions.
Well, make a comment.
Sure.
Remind me, when, when, when did this begin again, what year?
Nineteen seventy-four.
Wow.
And the, it was not interrupted for nine eleven. We went in, in the spring, and it was not interrupted for the DC sniper, if you recall that. Unfortunate time, so the only time that this trip has been interrupted since nineteen seventy-four was the pandemic. The three-year hiatus that it was just hopefully completing.
Well, I can certainly tell you that every, every interaction I've had with this trip, whether direct, indirect, has been not only positive, but the things I've heard about have been nothing but positive as far as the experience for the students.
I mean, at the end of the year, SOS asks students to write their memories and wills, you know, for a part of the eighth grade banquet, and it is littered with memories of, of the Washington DC trip. It is, you know, you know, certainly celebrated by. It is, you know, you know, certainly celebrated by, by students. And I think, for me, I'm excited because we have had a shift in our eighth grade curriculum. We had a return to, we used to have a world history curriculum in the eighth grade. And so, kind of the curricular connections were a little bit looser this trip. Now, it is a US history and civic-focused curriculum. You know, the, having that history and civic engagement come alive for our students is really going to be powerful and compelling, and I'm excited for, for that work. I'm excited for our socialized teachers and making the linkage to those experiences as well.
Questions, comments from committee members?
I don't have any questions yet. I mean, maybe I'll have questions as a parent of an eighth grader next year. But I think it's just very exciting, and it sounds amazing. And thank you for all you do to kind of make it happen. I'm sure it's not the easiest thing to kind of take, you know, whole breed on a trip like this. But it's really wonderful.
It's, it's a, so I just want to share with the committee, it's a year-long process. You know, this is, this is a trip that, you know, cannot be cobbled together with, with, you know, in a shorter time. You know, it really takes, you know, a tremendous amount of planning, logistics, and navigating it. So, you know, although, so the work will begin, you know, hopefully.
Tomorrow.
You know, so in order to ensure a successful trip for all.
So, if I might, so you mentioned that, that adjusting the schedule, okay, so that kids aren't so tired and necessarily lose, basically, a lot of time. Because this has not occurred for a couple of years, anything else that's basically, you've sort of thought through as far as, you know, this, I'm going to do it this, this way this time, or pretty much not so much?
Well, one, one of the things that had been kind of tried and true is we had done the trip differently than other schools. We really did have a premium-level trip where we did, you know, we didn't just hop on a coach leaving here. We were taking planes down too, which helped the length of time that would be needed for a quality trip. So, there's certain things, even major like that, that you wouldn't think. Those are the types of things that are being recommended by a lot of the tour companies that I've kind of kept, kept in touch with. Certainly not going, going to higher-quality hotels with higher-quality cleaning procedures. I'm hearing that a lot more. I think we're, if, if anyone has done any traveling to a state hotel, you'll hear about, you know, the cleaning that happens. I've asked for enhanced cleaning in between to make sure that those things happen. So, those things were, you know, we will incorporate into the quotes that we've received from companies. So, those little things there, it's kind of like the, some of the mitigation strategies we've employed over the last couple of years are going to translate into the trip in different ways. So, those are the things that Gary and I are kind of exploring and, and talking about as we get ready to really dig in and start planning for the trip.
So, you looking, so regarding that school committee approval, are you looking for specifics or just a yea or nay kind of thing from the committee at this point?
A yea or nay. I mean, it does follow the overnight trip policy of the school committee to gain your approval for, to begin the planning, you know, process. And we'll keep you abreast of things as things go, number of students that have signed on, itineraries when they become available, and things of that nature, and obviously answer any questions you may have along the way. But this really launches the process of diving into it, engaging with the vendor to help us do the planning. And like Gary said, it does take pretty much a full year to, to get ready. So, we'd like the, you know, opportunity to do that.
Question. Question for Gary. When did the kids have an opportunity to have like a preview session that says, this is, you know, do you meet in the gym a week ahead and kind of some practice scenarios or?
In preparation for, in preparation for the trip?
Yeah, just reviewing the rules and the expectations and?
Yeah, it's, so I think one of the first things is we would have a parent night this, this winter. So, I think that's going to set, set the stage and kind of help us measure interest in where we will, where we'll be. And then, once we have, you know, students who have started enrolling, then, you know, that work happens, you know, with our eighth-grade team. So, it's not just a one-off, it's not one presentation. I think it's, you know, really, we talk about our core values as a school. We talk about our expectations as a school. We talk about leadership in our eighth grader, you know, eighth grades from day one. So, it's not just about the eighth-grade trip. It's about what it means to be an eighth grader and have this responsibility and actually have this privilege to go on this trip. So, that, that's messaging that, that starts since, you know, September first. Then we have, you know, then we meet with our students. Our eighth-grade social studies teachers do an orientation, they walk students through. This is what you'll see, this is what it means. And I think, you know, for, for them, they give that preview of the itinerary, and then we kind of start outlining the expectations on the trip just beyond the sights of the trip. But what it looks like at mealtime, what it looks like on the bus, what it looks like at travel time, you know, the kind of logistics of just traveling, you know, for three days away from home. So, Keith, anything else that we missed?
No, I said, you said it very well.
In that, that process.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's, there's a cost to families for participating in this. I noticed that there is a scholarship or assistance. So, families who need that support, are they able to easily access financial support to be able to attend?
Yeah, so SOS has been tremendous in terms of their support. And so, for the last couple of years, their, their scholarship fund has been dormant. So, they have been able to build up those, those funds in preparation for this trip. I don't know what it currently is, is, is at, but Keith, percentage-wise, you know, what would you say would be the, like, the historic percentage of a scholarship?
Historical allotment has been just under fifty percent, like forty percent that would be offered to offset the cost of the trip for a family. Typically, it doesn't get into, you know, SOS established a scholarship fund probably, what, two years before, like two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, give or take, and really wanted to make sure that those that were already identified as need, families in need, those that qualify for free and reduced lunch, would be given a privilege for, for that, for that funding. So, that'd be something that Gary and I would manage through his office confidentially. And SOS would then be, you know, given a request for a certain value of money to offset the cost.
Thank you.
And we also encourage students to be involved with the paying of the trip. That's why we launch it nice and early, so they have plenty of time to mow lawns, babysit, rake leaves, do all the fun stuff that they can do to help offset. And I think that investment in that and having them have the sweat equity to pay for it has been a huge dividend for many kids to really appreciate the value of the trip.
Other questions, comments? All right, I entertain a motion to approve the eighth-grade overnight field trip to Washington DC for the dates from November eighth through November eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. So, here's our move.
Salute.
It's moved by Jessica, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kamali, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, unanimous, thank you very much. And we're looking forward to further updates.
Of course.
Although there'll be a different committee to get some updates, I think. So, now we've got the sixth-grade overnight field trip to Nature's Classroom in October.
Well, I have you here. Just to take people back, in the summer of two thousand nineteen, Stoner Environmental School closed its doors unexpectedly. And so, that trip that was planned for that October never, never had the opportunity to run. And we did have to find a new replacement for that stone experience. And so, I had booked the trip in Freedom, New Hampshire, from March thirtieth and April first of two thousand twenty. So, and as a result of the pandemic, we were never able to run that trip. So, that, that trip has been dormant. So, we have not run an outdoor classroom experience since two thousand eighteen. So, with that being said, you know, we, we were very excited this year. So, without Stone, I really have not had a foothold with any environmental school. We did a lot of work, and we connected with Nature's Classroom in Groton, Massachusetts this year. Because none of our classes, classes had any outdoor classroom experience, we were able to run three successful trips this fall. And it was a nice introduction to Nature's Classroom for us. And we were really impressed with the staff, we were impressed with the grounds. And as a result of the experience, we thought this, this location could become the new, new stone for us. So, in working with Nature's Classroom in Groton, we're hoping to secure an overnight trip for our sixth graders for next year. We are going to make an adjustment to the trip. It's only going to be a one-night trip to, to keep the cost down. In addition to that, what we could do is we would bring the entire sixth grade for the one night. It would be, you know, two days and one night. Historically, we used to use a whole week, and we used to divide up the sixth grade. We'd send the half, half of the sixth grade Monday through Wednesday, and then the other, the second half of Wednesday through Friday. I think in terms of re-establishing this, this trip, we probably want to start smaller. Also excited about the Groton location. I mean, the campus is absolutely gorgeous, and I think the half-hour proximity could be game-changing for some of our students.
Yes.
You know, we had students in the past, you know, who maybe have been reluctant to spend two nights up in Madison, New Hampshire. And so, we think that having the proximity of a half-hour away for students who are not ready to spend, you know, time away from home, they can at least have the day experience. Parents can kind of come and go and pick them up, and we're hoping that will be, you know, provide us more flexibility. So, we are requesting to reinstate this outdoor, this outdoor experience for our students in the sixth grade with Nature's Classroom in Groton.
Specific dates you're going to be determining?
I believe we are, so it's going to be October, October tenth and eleventh. So, it's the Tuesday, Wednesday after Columbus Day this next year.
Question, how many days is this trip?
It's going to be two days, one night. So, they would, so students, we would leave, we leave Trottier roughly around seven, get there at eight, spend the whole day, spend the night. And then, we would, working with the Nature's Classroom staff, we'd actually stay till about five o'clock the following night. They'd just, they'd get up and have a full day and then come back that evening to Trottier.
Questions, other questions, comments? So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the sixth-grade overnight field trip to Nature's Classroom, Inc. in Groton, Mass. For the dates, October tenth through eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
So, moved.
So, moved by, I missed it, Katara?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Jess, discussion, all in favor?
Hold on.
Oops, I'm sorry.
The discussion is around the dates, October tenth and eleventh? That's indigenous people say, or something, right, that we observe? And so, wouldn't the, there'd be a population of kids that wouldn't go? Because maybe their families are planning a trip or?
So, for, if students, so that did come up. So, if it was that weekend, we are going to communicate with our fifth-grade, you know, parents at this date. It's going to, you know, so, you know.
In advance.
In, in advance, you know, we can't, we can't preclude an opportunity for a field trip for, for extended vacations. So, I think that, you know, I think that was important, and we do, we will message that with our incoming fifth-grade families about that date to save the date in advance.
Other questions? Any question? All right, ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed, unanimous? We move on, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. We move on to policy development, and distribution.
So, in your packet, there are two first readings. The first is B two twenty. And on the last note, there is a reference to policy B two ninety, which speaks to speaking procedures at meetings. On December fifteenth of two thousand twenty-one, so almost a year today, the committee adopted a public comment at school committee meetings policy, which is now policy B three thirty. So, the change to B two twenty would make sure that there is a correct reference to the, the correct policy, so that it is B ninety crossed out and B three thirty referenced.
You all, that, you have questions, please? Just make sure you're all clear, because this sort of came about because of the discussion I was having with the superintendent about the public comment and how there was inconsistencies existing. If you look through all the policies, okay, we had, we'd adopted a new policy, but there was still some language in previous policies that were somewhat inconsistent. So, that's kind of how it came about, and I'm sorry. So, what was it, I interrupted a question, I'm sorry.
It's just a quick question. It says, regular meetings come to order promptly at six-thirty. Do we, have some meetings been starting at five-thirty based on if they're combined with school, with combined meetings?
No.
Or is that, like, do we need to put the time in there? Do you want some flexibility on that? I just, I, I thought I recently saw that a meeting's, or is that?
Yeah, that was five thirty, yeah.
So, the, you're correct, the combined meetings start at five-thirty typically.
Yeah, and then this meeting would start later or something, yeah.
So, I would just, my comment would just be that these are guidelines.
Okay.
So, although there is a specific time in there, you're not wrong, that you're probably better not to reference a specific time. But the fact that these are guidelines, it gives the chairperson some discretion that needs to be looked to.
Well, we're
Can you say something like?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Please.
Can we say something like promptly when, at the time posted or something like that?
Yeah.
Instead of six-thirty?
We could say anything that makes sense, actually, and I don't, and, and we're, 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 see, we aren't necessarily, well, we're, we're really not taking this to a first reading, if you will, because we can, we can do it. We have the authorization to just make this change if we don't want to have it come through the rest of the process, if it's a simple change. So, let's, let's end up with it, and even if we don't vote it, even if we don't vote it tonight, okay, let's end up with what, what we want, what, what the, what the right thing is here, so.
I think her suggestion, at the time posted.
And where are you, you're in two, you're in two twenty?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, two twenty.
Guidelines, bullet two.
Guideline, bullet two. So far, we're simply saying, regular meetings come to order promptly at?
The time posted.
At the time posted?
Or as soon thereafter.
To the form of the president. Anyone object? That's a pretty simple change, I think. And no objection from the district? Rest of these meetings also? All right, what else? And?
I just think it's funny that, you know, not funny, but yes, I remember when we had to put the, when we had to put the time limit to eleven PM and ten-thirty PM, because we actually needed it.
I, I have a question. What's this, the last bullet? Informational discussion that was determined, it's permitted while no motion is pending. Do we follow that? Is that, is that even timed? I don't even know exactly what that means.
Are you talking about the informational discussion?
Yeah, what does that mean?
What is, what is informational discussion? And are we ever timing our?
I have anyone to stop watching, maybe?
I'll give you an example when a budget, preliminary budget's presented.
Yeah, exactly. I don't know, I just, so I see that this was last really revised in two thousand fifteen. I wonder, do we want to put this policy on the list for the subcommittees to look at? But, you know, because we're having joint meetings now. So, maybe we want to do a joint subcommittee meeting and just add this to the list and get everyone's thoughts on?
So, let me, I mean, that's a traditional way to do it, but I'm trying to remember. What was the, do you, do you remember what the conflict was here?
Yeah, so we
Inconsistency was in two twenty, because we put in, we, we voted in, I mean, we voted in three-thirty, and I think we did that through, all, all the committees voted three-thirty in, right?
Right.
And then, we had different history, there were different, there was different history on some of these policies that existed or didn't exist within some of the school committees. So, I don't remember what the issue was.
Yeah, so I think
Let's go on.
So, I think that, I don't think there's a sense of urgency to, to vote this policy in the changes this evening. I think we just want to make sure that for the citizens who are referencing the policy, that correct policy is a reference. So, I think more importantly is making sure B two ninety, which is reference, is accurate, and that is the next policy that we can look at as a first read of the season.
Okay, so, I, I agree that we need to direct, we need to connect the dot between school committee meetings and the procedure by which citizens may speak at school committee meetings. And we need to basically direct that to three-thirty instead of two ninety. So, was there any change to this, or does this still? So was there any change to this or does this still exist?
So this still exists?
Uh, I mean, so, so, so the verbiage that exists here
Yeah.
isn't new. It may not be good, but it's not new.
Correct.
Right? So then I'm not sure I see anything wrong with voting to amend, which I think that's really what it does, right? Uh, I'm saying just to, to amend B two twenty, uh, the note in B two twenty to replace policy B two ninety with B three thirty. And we'll leave, and the rest of it's still the same and we need to actually have the policy subcommittee deal with it because there are a number of issues that we want to deal with. Does that make sense?
Yeah, totally.
Okay, so, uh, um, uh, let's see. Uh, I entertain a motion to amend the language in, um, conduct of school committee meetings, B two twenty, to replace in the notes the, the policy B two ninety with policy B three thirty. Is there a so moved, does that make sense?
So moved.
So, so moved by Kamali, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jen, discussion, all in favor? All right, small change. Inappropriate amount of time on it, but I'm glad that, uh, well, at, at least, at, at least we're focused on the fact that there's, there is an issue with, with this policy itself. So that'll, that'll go back and go through the normal course and we won't have any misunderstanding if, if, if there's some sort of a public comment misunderstanding now, all right. So now we're into B two ninety?
So B two ninety represents a series of policies that were aggregated, aggregated into one long, complex policy. And that was done in two thousand, comprehensive, comprehensive in two thousand and sixteen. Included in B two ninety, um, on page two of five, uh, speaks about speaking procedures at meetings. So, um, the recommendation is to strike that and add public comment at school committee meetings because we have a public comment policy. Leave the overview, uh, leave how to get on the agenda and strike completely audience sharing since that is B three thirty.
Right.
There was another disconnect, you know, where we had, you know, competing language and old language that wasn't really consistent with what we wanted to do in the new language. So how do we, discussion on this, questions on this? All right, so, so how do we say this? Um, so is this marked up?
It is.
The way that we want it? Everyone agree that?
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, I guess we could say that it's through the whole policy, right? I mean, so we could really say that we, um, I entertain a motion to modify school committee meeting policy B two ninety as, as stated, as, as presented in the packet?
Yes.
Good?
So moved.
So moved by Kamali?
Seconded by Jess, discussion, all in favor?
Uh, unanimous, thank you. Because there, 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 there could, we could be called on this, right? If somebody said, well, wait a minute, public comment, and over here you say it's, so this, this at least moves us past that. And no questions to that first policy, two twenty has, has some work. Uh, thank you again, all right. Um, we're, we're out of that one.
Thank you.
Personnel items, thank you.
So in your packet is the personnel report as of December fourteenth. Um, and I'll just note that in terms of resignations, we continue to see um, some of the most challenging positions to fill are educator, educational support professionals. Um, and we've had several resignations. And again, the candidate pool for these types of positions has been, um, not very deep. And we continue to try to recruit and retain the good people that we have. But it has been very challenging, which is reflective in the personnel report this evening.
Okay, I, I know, I, I know we don't necessarily have a lot of time left, but I don't know if, uh, are you looking to excuse the principals, all of them?
It's her fault, no, no.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Actually, Gary started his day fourteen hours ago.
All right, um, communications, man, at this time. Um, we've got the action on the minutes, we have three of them. Um, and there's the open meeting minutes of November ninth. Um, it, are we, there's the executive session minutes of November ninth, are we voting to retain?
Retain.
Okay, so that'll be, I don't know. And then there's the special open meeting minutes of December third. Let's just try to do this all together if no one checks. I entertain a motion to approve the, um, open meeting minutes for South Rose School Committee on November ninth, two thousand twenty-two. To approve the executive session minutes of the South Rose School Committee meeting of November ninth, two thousand twenty-two, to be retained. And to approve the special open meeting minutes of December third. December third. Was that the?
So that, so basically?
But we didn't, I guess we have minutes on, well, well, I didn't call that meeting to order because we didn't have a quorum, so how do we?
So, so basically the, the meet, the meeting minutes state that there was in a quorum and the meeting was not called a discussion. It was just a, kind of a closing.
Fine, so, so to approve the, uh, the open meeting minutes of December third, two thousand twenty-two, do I give a so moved?
So moved.
Katara?
Yep.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kamali, discussion on any of those? Now that I've had the discussion on that, December third, all in favor? Unanimous. Um, agenda items for next month, everybody.
I would, I would like to request, sorry, did I jump ahead of you?
It's okay, people do it all the time.
Um, I would actually like, and I, I think, I, I, so I guess like I would like an update on the, you know, the couple incidents that have gone around in terms of, that have gone, there have been the emails out to the community and to families if we can get an update on how we're dealing with potentially, is this an increase in these kind of incidents? How the school is managing or dealing with that? And just giving that information out to the community, I think it'd be helpful to have an update.
Okay. The only thing here so far are the student support services and the MCAS. And now we've added this one. And obviously, things come up sufficient, insufficient time before the meeting date. Um, and we can kind of manage this, you know, extend of the meeting.
Both the budget.
Don't think you've lost your opportunity.
Budget will be big and?
Budget will be there.
Yeah, uh, other, have you thought of?
Recommended budget, I think that I will be having conversations with Mark Purple around timeline. Um, the next January meeting, I believe it's January eleventh. So it's a quick turnaround time and I think what would be beneficial for us is to have more time before we present the recommended budget and I just need to make sure that falls within the town guidelines of what it is.
Yeah, is there a date out on that early morning meeting yet? Uh, has, has Brian sent something out on that yet? I know that he's, he skipped December.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we don't know what it is yet.
Are there any other, um, meetings we need to know about between now and, um?
January eleventh?
Yeah.
So, um.
There's a budget, there's a sub, budget subcommittee, right? Which is going to come Monday night.
Is that for all of us?
Just for, it's just, it's just for the two.
Subcommittee members.
Subcommittee members, this whole, this whole quorum issue.
So no, no committee meetings scheduled at this point, um, other than our next, the regularly scheduled committee.
Okay. We don't know about bargaining?
That has, that has not been said now, we, we, I think we'll have a brief discussion on that in the hopefully short executive session we'll have at the end of this, um, public meeting. But, um, now, that, um, subcommittee meeting is a Zoom meeting, right?
Correct.
Now, if you want to attend, any of you want to attend this, you can't attend as a participant, but you can attend as an audience.
Oh, but it's Zoom?
So you can sit in, so, so you can make sure that you get an invite and, and follow through, which is?
But it's Monday?
Monday.
Monday, the nineteenth.
I can't do that, but thanks, okay.
And that is, Becky, that is at five, we have two, two.
Seven.
Seven.
It makes you feel very ignored when you do that and you say it off and you wish you could, but that's, a couple times. It was, I, I found it to be informative, actually. Okay, nothing else that we know of at this point?
Yeah.
Um, okay, then I'm going to use the correct term, any public comments? Seeing one, um, I think I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting to enter into an executive session meeting which will not conclude with coming back to open meeting. I didn't say that correctly, but you got it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Anyone like to move that?
So moved.
I moved my terrible language, huh? Okay, moved by Jess. Remember, remember she moved it when you had the minutes, okay. And I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Katara.
Um, Katara, okay, we need a roll call vote for this. Uh, Katara?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
A vote yes. So we are adjourned and I guess we take a short break. Thank you very much and then, uh?
Thank you.
And then we'll, uh, thank you very, yeah, thank you very much, by the way. And then we'll, we'll hopefully, um, spend just a bit of time on, on, and we're, and we're into executive session. I think I need to state this for, uh, to discuss collective bargaining.